Welcome to This is What Democracy Sounds Like. I'm Kevin Prang. This program is a presentation of Metropolitan Congregations United. MCU is a community organization that brings together religious congregations, community groups, and individuals to work for a common purpose, to create a better life for all residents of the St. Louis region. We work at the intersection of race, economy, political power, gender, and the structures of oppression within us individually, within our organization, and within the community. We are working towards people's control of the government, building community control of the economy, expanding the public sphere, and creating structural racial equity. Today, my guest is Steve Roberts, who currently is the state representative for the 77th district in Missouri, but who will soon be the state senator for the 5th district. And today, we're going to be talking about our second special session of the Missouri Legislature. So Representative Roberts, thank you for joining me very much. And first of all, congratulations on winning your election for state senate.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here. Thanks so much for having me again, Kevin.
So we're now in the second special session called by the governor. What was the reason and how did this come about?
Right. So this dealt with authorizing more of the CARES Act funding to be used. I know with particular with regards to the city of St. Louis, all of our fundings basically been spent. And there was another $17 million appropriation that we were, the city was supposed to get. And a lot of this can be used, for example, we've got folks who are behind on their rent payments, things like that, to help get them the support that they need. So the initial focus of this special session was specifically tailored towards the CARES Act funding. And then I'm sure, as you heard, that that changed last week when we were up there, when the governor expanded the call.
And so what is the other thing that the governor is looking to get in this session?
So the other thing that he's trying to get through this session was to deal with COVID-19 immunity. And the focus of that would be helping, you know, any businesses that are open to basically make it. So if you catch COVID from them, you know, at their location, or you know, maybe you're working for them, to make it so that the business can't be held liable.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to that in just a moment. On the budget, so this is dealing with federal money that was allocated. So where are the places that this money will be separated? You had mentioned the $17 million. Is that definitely going to go to the city of St. Louis? Or is that yet to be separated out?
Yet to be determined. So really, this is basically an appropriation to allow the governor to spend the funds how he sees fit. So most of our debate was focused on where this, you know, money is going to go to make sure it's going to the right places, you know, helping small businesses, things like that, people who really need the support.
Okay. And are there any surprises there? Or what are the places that you've been advocating for the money to be spent?
So for me, definitely the focus is on folks who are struggling to get by, you know, people who are concerned about being kicked out. And I believe the next month, there's the eviction hold for folks in the city of St. Louis. So you know, for example, if you can't pay your rent, sheriffs weren't allowed to evict you. But that's about to expire unless the mayor ends up renewing that. So you know, for me, my focus is really helping folks in the, who are in a vulnerable position, who've been laid off, who need assistance, just to make sure they have those basic needs.
Okay. And so how do you, how do you make sure that money goes that direction? Because is this just a pot that the state can then decide where to spend it? And how do we make sure it gets to the people that need it?
Right. And that's what me and my other senators and representatives up there have been advocating for, to make sure specifically our communities get the funds that we need. As I mentioned, at the city of St. Louis, unfortunately, we were short chains. We really need every dollar. I mean, there is a place for it. And another big part as well is increased testing. So to make sure that our cities, the St. Louis Health Department, has the funds that they need to make sure we're getting folks tested and can provide the medical care that they need.
So this money came from the federal government. When was it allocated? And why are we just now getting around to it? Because I understand that it has to be spent by the end of the year.
Right. So it was allocated, I forget the, I'm blanking on the date. But I remember, so when we wrapped up session before we gave the governor broad powers, and this was really just an expansion of that for those initial funds.
So let's get back to the liability law. So what is it trying to address? What's the problem that's, that's trying to be solved with it? And who is being protected by it?
Sure. And for me, I don't really see it as a problem. There's a lot of concerns from Missouri Chamber of Commerce that, you know, businesses are afraid to open up. And they're concerned that, you know, if someone ends up catching COVID-19 at their establishment, that they're going to be held liable. And there's going to be this waterfall of lawsuits that are just going to be a complete threat to business. And I don't think that's, I think that's very unlikely. And for me, it's disheartening that we're using a special session to go up to address COVID-19 immunity when we've, you know, there are more pressing matters at hand. So the reason for that is just to give immunity to any businesses, to say, you know what, they can open up and they won't be held responsible. Now, I think that in our regular session coming up in January, if we want to examine that, that would be the appropriate time. And if you want to say, like we do with food grading, for example, you know, you know, you have to have a certain number of, at least a procedure. Like, let's say, you know, you've got to make sure all your employees are wearing masks. And if there's an outbreak, you know, you, your company policy is that you quarantine, and you do this contract tracing. And if you, you know, don't require masks or you're negligent. I mean, for example, if you go to see a doctor and the doctor says, well, I'm lazy. I didn't sterilize my tools and I got all my patients sick. I think everyone agreed that that doctor should be held responsible for that level of negligence. So I don't think a blanket immunity for COVID-19 is reasonable or fair. And I don't think Missouri citizens want their tax dollars spent on a special session to protect businesses from these types of lawsuits. I think that if we're going to address it, the general session would be the appropriate time. Then we could have, it'd be easier to get folks up there to testify in favor and against and examine it then. So I, you know, and as, you know, we talked about briefly, this pandemic is not getting better. It's getting worse. You know, our cases are starting to rise. And as we discussed earlier, a lot of, I was supposed to be up in Jefferson City, actually, this week for my senate orientation. And there was an outbreak, a group of the Republican senators were in Branson with their staff, and they all ended up, or not all, I know several of them ended up catching COVID-19. So they ended up having to cancel the orientation. The senate was supposed to come back to truly read and finally pass the CARES Act funding at the House of Burden, working on it previous week. All of that had to be kicked back because of this retreat and them testing positive. So I am glad that they did the right thing. You know, they pushed session back, keeping our staff and the other members safe. But just that week, when I came back, a couple of staff members from the house ended up testing positive. And as you can imagine, me and several of my colleagues ended up having to get tested because of that. So it's this, you know, it's crazy because almost every day I get a text from someone who's looking to get a COVID test. And I've been providing free tests for the last six months in my district. And every day I hear from someone who's been exposed or knows someone who was, and they're trying to get help.
It really seems like, especially since we're, what? Six to eight weeks away from the regular session starting, that this is a legislation that could wait six to eight weeks, that by the time any sort of lawsuit even got started, you all would be back in session and be able to address it.
Right. We'll be back January 6th. So I don't see the urgency of putting us all at risk to protect larger businesses. And just, you know, as, as a lawyer, I think it's very unlikely that people are going to, it's too hard to connect that direct cause. I mean, I think if your business is going to be held liable, it's going to be egregious, like they're going to be there. They're going to say, well, you know what, no one was wearing masks. And you know, the supervisor knew this person had it and they still made them go to work. I mean, if you're going to prevail on a case like that, it's got to be like an overwhelming amount of evidence. I just don't think that, you know, these businesses are just going to get inundated with lawsuits because someone catches the virus. Because, you know, you've got asymptomatic folks, you know, you, you're not even showing symptoms until a couple of days later. It's just, and you can get it from anywhere because the disease is so contagious. So to hold the business to say, no, I know I got it at, not only I got it at this place, but they were being, it's their fault that I got it. You know, you don't, you know, in the flu season or other things like that, you just don't typically hear about lawsuits like that. So I think that it's, you know, a little bit of paranoia. But I, our, our system, I don't think will, will, you know, create this huge burden for, for businesses and this wave of COVID-19 cases. I think that if you see these filed, I don't imagine, and I could be wrong, but I don't imagine plaintiffs prevailing on these types of suits. I think that, you know, a jury or the judge is going to see that, look, you're not able to show a proximate cause to you getting sick and the company. So we're going to get rid of this, unless, as I said, the company is doing something completely egregious. And if that's the case, they should be held responsible.
I think what seems a little frustrating to me is that we're looking to protect businesses, which is on the surface a good thing. But at the same time, it seems like the state government hasn't really taken the initiative to, to back up and support those businesses with rules and regulations when it comes to mitigating the pandemic. So that if there was a general mask order throughout the state or stay at home, then you're, you're, you're sort of backing up your local businesses and saying, we're behind you. We'll take the heat for this. But without that support, you're sort of pushing the businesses out there, saying, you're on your own. Oops, I guess we have to now have liability coverage because we didn't back you up.
Right.
To me, that's, that feels like where the frustrating part comes in.
Yeah. Because it's crazy. It's like, well, we, you know, we're not going to shut down the state. We're going to let individual counties and municipalities make their own rules. And we're just going to sit back and see what happens. You know, I think you're absolutely right. Something like a statewide mask mandate, like saying, look, here, we're going to allow you all to open up, but here's what we needed to do. And it's not like this mask is a huge inconvenience. I remember reading an article where it was two hairdressers at a salon. They both ended up having the virus and were seeing patients. They saw between them, I think, over 120 patients during that week at the time that, you know, they were sharing the virus. And it turns out they didn't pass it to the contract tracers. Look back, they, none of their clients ended up catching the virus. That's because they were both wearing masks the whole time. So I think there is a way for the, to keep businesses open in a safe way to protect people. I mean, if, I know that's an anecdotal story, but you know, you've got the heads of the CDC saying that, you know, we think that a mask is better prevention than either even a vaccine can be. So if we're going to take this policy of, okay, well, we're going to not shut down, we're going to keep businesses open, the state really needs to take the lead and say, here's what you need to be doing to keep your clients, to keep your customers safe.
I think that was a story from Springfield, Missouri, early on, like back in the early summer. So yeah, I remember hearing about that, too. So another thing I remember, I was hearing about from this, from this special session is that there was some talk of addressing use of force tactics by police officers in Missouri. So what was talked about and where do things stand with that right now?
Great question. So I serve on the Special Committee for Criminal Justice. Representative Shemad Dogan, he's actually the only Republican African American in the legislature. He's the chairman of that committee. And we've worked very well together as a team to work on criminal justice reforms and just other police reform issues. So he called this hearing and we really wanted to have, the purpose was this really to lay the groundwork for our general session coming up in 2021. I mean, we knew that we weren't going to be able to move these bills forward. We didn't actually even offer any specific pieces of legislation, but we wanted to have, start the conversation with representatives from the Police Officers Association, the Highway Patrol, so we could get buy-in and support. So when we bring this up, it's not just, you know, fresh and they have no idea what they're looking at. So there were some things that came up where, you know, they were pretty close to being like, you know what, this is right. This is what we, we need to do so we can restore credibility to the police. And there were some issues where we got a lot of pushback, which was a little surprising to me. So for example, some of the main things we talked about was a statewide ban on chokeholds. And St. Louis SLMPD and the Kansas City Police Department, they've already banned those. But the, the person who came to testify in front of us with the Sheriff's Association tried to explain, you know, how, you know, these needed and there are different types. There's respiratory chokeholds, there's vascular chokeholds. But kind of our point was, when you're struggling with someone, you know, that, that line, his argument was, well, they're, you know, the, it's the, I believe it was the vascular chokehold, they're like, well, when that's done properly, you know, it's, no one's ever injured. There's a very low chance of injury. But of course, that's you, you know, doing it in a training class in a controlled setting. So I mean, if our city's police department can, you know, take someone into custody without using that maneuver, I think that's fine. And of course, if there's a situation where it's life or death, you know, that's, that's completely different. But just to kind of have that be a go-to move, I don't think that that's, that's, that's reasonable or absolutely necessary. I mean, you, the focus really needs to be more on de-escalation training and things like that. So we got a lot of pushback on the chokeholds, for example. No-knock warrants, we talked about it. We really had some heartbreaking testimony from some witnesses who called in. There was a woman who was telling us that her neighbor basically had an issue with her. So her neighbor was friends with this police officer, who then went to a municipal judge to get a warrant to search her house because of an unpaid utility bill. So they kicked down the door, they walk in, shoot her dog as it's running away. They put a gun to her nephew's head and said that if he moves, they're going to kill him. Just completely like egregious behavior. We're sitting there like, all this over, like, this doesn't make any sense over, you know, her paying a ticket. Apparently she'd spoken with the officer the day before to say, oh yeah, no, like I spoke with the utility company, like it's fine, I'm on a payment plan. But this, I guess spiteful neighbor, just and this officer, for example, who ended up having a lot of complaints against him, broke down her door and, you know, terrified her and all of her family members. And you hear about things like that and it just breaks your heart. And you know, I know in my community, for example, there is inherent distrust of police because you hear about things like that and it's someone you know, this has happened, that these things have happened to. So you know, we had a representative from the Highway Patrol speak with us on that. And you know, they were saying, well, you know, these are very rarely used. And when they are, it's, you know, for a very limited purpose. But I just, I don't think that there's, there's a, a real need for those in the state. You know, if, if you're, you know, need to do this no-knock warrant because you're trying to seize drugs, you're worried about them flushing them down the toilet, then you know, that's really not who you need to be going after. If they got such a small amount that they can just flush them down the toilet, then you can knock and, you know, go for it then. I mean, this, they should have a massive amount or there's nothing preventing you from announcing yourself, giving you enough time to go, you know, properly go in there, identify yourself, just to minimize that, that risk.
I don't know if you have this information, but can you clarify for me? Is, is, is the status of it being no-knock, is that determined by the judge issuing the warrant? Or is that something that the police decide when they execute the warrant?
So it's before, so they have to apply to the judge. So basically, the judge will sign off the warrant, you know, they're requesting. And there's, there's a very specific amount of criteria that is supposed, in an ideal situation, is supposed to be met. You know, like it's, you know, I can't remember what they exactly are. But the police are saying, here's basically, they have the warrant, give us the, saying, hey, look, here's why this needs to be a no-knock warrant. And then the judge signs off on it and then it's executed.
Okay. So it sounds like if we were to eliminate or drastically reduce the use of no-knock warrants, it's, it's then puts, it seems to me that puts the emphasis then on the system instead of the police officer in, in that moment making the decision. So the judge actually then says, no, you can't do it. So it almost, it seems to me that it would actually lift, sort of lift the burden on the police. You know what your parameters and your boundaries are, and this is how you have to go forward.
Mm-hmm. And kind of related to that, something that I was glad that, the representative from the Highway Patrol actually agreed with me this young, that we've got an issue in St. Louis County of, and I spoke with it, I had a really useful and informative conversation with a sheriff of Jefferson County. And we were discussing statewide tracking system for officer misconduct. So they, and they call it muni hopping. So management, you've got an officer who's, you know, relieved from training or is basically removed from the force. And maybe they didn't technically do anything illegal or there wasn't enough evidence for prosecution. But this is someone who just simply should not have a badge and shouldn't have a gun. So what they'll do is they'll just go to a neighboring municipality, apply for them. And then unfortunately, something tragic happens and they found out, find out afterwards, like, oh wait, this person was released from the neighboring department because of this bad behavior. So we were discussing, you know, a way to track that across the state. So if you've got someone released or, you know, basically fired, that another neighboring municipality isn't unwillingly, unwittingly picking them up and giving them a position when this is someone who's a danger to society. So, you know, I, on that issue, I was encouraged because we were, you know, we, we all agree that something needs to be done. But it's how, how do we go about doing, you know, is this a public database? Or is this some kind of registry that the Highway Patrol is tracked? You know, how do we also protect that officer's, you know, identity and things like that? So I'm hoping this legislative session, since we're all agreed that, look, you're right, this needs to be addressed. And then the real issue we have is, all right, well, how do we address it in a way that's fair? So I was really encouraged that Representative Dogan put the hearing together. We had some great witnesses who just were able to tell personal stories. You know, it's always better to have them in person. But I was really glad that they took the time to call in, to speak with the committee. And hopefully, you know, when we bring this legislation up in January, you know, we can still can continue to build that support for these, these issues.
That's good to hear. And I guess that brings up a couple questions then. How are you transitioning to your senate responsibilities right now? You said that you were supposed to be in an orientation that has, had to be canceled because of COVID outbreak within the senate. So what types of things are you doing right now to transition? And how do you carry, since you're in the house right now, how would you carry a bill like this forward to the senate?
Right. So I'll have my, what we typically do is you'll have a house sponsor and the senate sponsor. So for some of the stuff I've been working on with Shemad, you know, I'd carry it in the senate chamber. Him or another member would carry it in the house chamber. And right now, we got our, at first, we thought they weren't going to give it to us until we were sworn in, but they've given us our ability to pre-file legislation. So we do have senate staff available to us. So me and my legislative assistant have been going through legislation that I filed previously in the house that we want to continue to work on in the senate. Another one that had broad support in committee provided a tax incentive for employers who hire people who have a felony conviction full-time. And we put certain precaution measures in there, for example, so you don't have someone just taking advantage of it. You know, have to have the employee hired for six months within that consecutively in that year. And you know, we figured if you hired someone for, they've been there for six months, you know, that's someone you put a lot of time and energy into and you've invested in them and they're going to continue to be a loyal employee. So really just trying to put a suite together of information that, you know, we can have for people looking for that second chance where that, you know, they can take that to an appliance. They look, you know, I know you've got concerns about this, but here are different benefits. Because, you know, for me, I've always been passionate about our most formidable citizens and helping out folks who deserve and need that second chance. You know, as you know, once you have a felony conviction, the worst part about it isn't necessarily the time you serve in prison. It's everything afterwards. I mean, you can legally be discriminated against in your job. Who hires you can be legally discriminated against in your housing. So whether it's perceived or actual, that's just a huge burden that continues to hold people back. So anything I can do that, you know, changes that, anything where we can increase funding for diversion programs, drug treatment course, because those things work. I mean, I saw when I was out in California, when I was a law student, I was able to work with a Compton District Attorney's Office. And we really took a focus in looking at the individual as, you know, is this someone who is a threat, danger to society? Or is this just, you know, a young kid who did something stupid? Who, you know, we can do other things to get him on the right track as opposed to burdening him with a felony conviction?
That brings up an issue that is close to the heart of MCU right now, and that's unlock the vote, which is related to this. So making sure that those who have served their time and are, but are still on probation or parole have their voting rights restored to them. Have you worked on that at all? And what do you see as far as a path forward for that in the legislature next year?
I haven't yet, but that's definitely something I would, I would love to champion. Unfortunately, Republicans have been, for better or just very against anything that makes voting more accessible or expands it. I mean, I think absolutely, you know, if you're on paper, as you're still an American citizen, you know, that's not a right that you should lose or forfeit. So there, there hasn't been much on that. And you know, me and Representative Bosley have been trying to make it easier for folks who are, you know, in jail to, to be able to vote, you know, to do mail-in ballots, absentee, things like that. So we get a lot of pushback, unfortunately, for the Secretary of State on anything really that can expand voting. I'm glad that we were able to do some form of that with the, during the pandemic. We expanded mail-in voting, but all of that was statutorily limited. So, you know, it's interesting because in there, we gave the Secretary of State authority to investigate claims of voter fraud or misconduct. And, you know, from my perspective, I'm like, great, go ahead and investigate it. This will show our point that this isn't an issue in the state of Missouri. So, you know, we gave him those broad powers. And I, I imagine they're still, when we try to make it the norm in the state, they're going to say, well, we've got to protect our, you know, electoral system. It's, there's too much fraud. It's like, well, you know, your office had the ability to investigate it. Did this happen then? No. So then what's the problem? So, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, one side of the aisles is more interested in, it's not about the integrity of our election system. It's about who's voting and them wanting certain people to vote and certain people not to vote.
Thank you for your honesty on that. It looks like it'd be an uphill, an uphill battle for, for that particular legislation. So we're recording this the weekend before the Thanksgiving holiday. So when, when's the next time the legislature is scheduled to meet? And what happens next?
Tendatively, the senate's supposed to convene on November 30th to, to finally pass the CARES Act funding appropriation. And then that first week of December, I believe December 7th, the house is supposed to come back to address the COVID-19 immunity. But it's all still kind of up in the air. You know, we, who knows if when we, you know, there, there might be another outbreak or some other limiting factor. So that's the plan. But I mean, at that point, you know, you're just, we're three weeks out from the general session, assembly session. Anyways, I don't know why we would, we just unnecessarily risk that when we're going up in less than a month. But that's kind of the tentative timeline for now. And then, for example, my senate orientation, they canceled. So for new legislators, they do a statewide, a two-week tour. And that's really a great bonding experience because it's you and all the newly elected officials. You take a bus tour, you go all across the state, you, you visit different facilities. So you know, you're in St. Louis, you're in farming communities, things like that. And it gives you an opportunity just to, you know, bond with your other members of the legislature. And they end up having, it looks like they're going to cancel that unfortunately, because you know, it is a bus tour. So you're in close proximity with these people really for, for two weeks. But that's kind of what, what's on the horizon. And you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll do that orientation in mid-December. So, you know, I'll have all the tools I need to be ready to go come January 6th.
When does the legislature open to begin filing bills for next year? When does that start?
So we do have our pre-filing open now in the senate. I'm not sure if the house has opened that. There's, might open the first week of December. So we are able to start pre-filing legislation. And basically, that just means like, you know, we have the staff available to us to draft the bills and then we can go ahead and sign them. So they're filed with the clerk's office. So you don't kind of have to go through that process. And there's some, some strategy as far as if you want to pre-file legislation or not. You know, if you, if you're worried it's going to be controversial, if you pre-file it, then you know, you've got a bunch of lobbyists and kind of government, because it's all public record, they may start, you know, building a defense of that legislation, trying to stop it, you know. And that gives them kind of a lead time to kind of get all their ducks in the row versus, you know, you just file it, the, you know, whenever you're ready to up there. And then they don't have as much time to organize. So there's a little bit of political strategy as far as, you know, do you want to pre-file legislation or you just kind of want to wait and just drop it when you know, you, if you got the chairman of the committee ready to hear it and you've got the president, the senator, and speaker in the house saying, okay, we'll go ahead and refer this to committee.
It seems like it's a, it's a fine line, too. Because if you, it seems like if you wait too long, the, the general session is so short from January to May, that if you're not running soon out of the gates, your legislation is just going to get buried in amongst everything else that, that gets filed.
Oh yeah. I mean, it really, if your legislation hasn't made it out of one of the chambers by spring break, unless it's one of the governor's priorities, there's a good chance it's not going to make it across to the finish line just because there's so many ways to stop, stall out a bill or just completely change it. So it's not what, you know, you initially started it to be. We get these bills that we call them Christmas trees, Christmas trees, where it starts as one subject matter, they change the title, and then it's like, all right, we're just gonna throw everything onto this piece of legislation because it seems to be moving.
You talked about this a little bit with the super majority. The results of the fall election means that the Republicans remain in control of the executive branch.
Right.
Continue to have the super majority in the legislation. Amendment three passed, so that super majority seems like it's gonna be in place for a long time. What does this mean for doing your job as a state senator?
Well, I'm really encouraged that, you know, of course, it would have been fantastic to have a Democrat in the governor's office. I mean, because then we would have someone who could actually veto legislation back when Nixon was in office. So they had to get the votes in both chambers to try and override a gubernatorial veto. And it makes it a little bit, it makes it actually a lot more difficult, as you can imagine, being in the minority party. But for me, I'm really excited just to take off the experiences that I've had in the House to be in the other chamber. And that's kind of one of the unique powers that our senators have. We've got some of the most powerful state senators in the country, because there's only 34 of us versus 163 members of the House. And really, each senator almost operates as an individual and as an island. And that's just kind of one of the basic tenants of our senators. So if you're, you know, determined, this is one of the reasons why we're the only state in the nation that hasn't developed a prescription monitoring program. Because you've got a couple just determined senators who are focused on killing that piece of legislation. So for example, in the House, they can time your debate, you're not allowed to filibuster. And if the speaker doesn't want you, they don't have to call on you. So you could stand trying to speak on a piece of legislation and they can really just ignore you. The Senate, none of that is allowed. So once you hold the floor, you can speak on a piece of legislation for as long as you want. You can, you know, filibuster it, and they have to recognize you. So, you know, you can really do a lot of things. You can make amendments on the fly. So for example, on the House side, let's say, you know, there's a, you've got to always have an eye on the counter, because once they call a bill up on the floor, if your amendment hasn't been prefiled with the clerk, you're not allowed to offer an amendment. You can do an amendment to the amendment. So let's say someone amends the bill, and then you want to amend their amendment. If that amendment still be discussed, you can do that. But you're not allowed to do amendments on the fly, which it didn't used to have, it didn't used to be that way. That was a way to kind of cut down debates. So you've got to see, all right, well, this bill's made out of the committee. You know what, I know I want to amend it. I need to make sure I file my amendment ahead of time versus where in the Senate, you can kind of just be talking about it and just right there be like, all right, look, here's what we'll do to satisfy you, to keep us moving forward, to fix this piece of legislation. So, you know, I'm really excited and encouraged. I'm glad we were able to hold on to a couple seats. So, you know, we had Judy Baker and Deb Lavender, who, you know, we were hoping to flip those. But we were able to hold on to Lauren Authers, who, she flipped her seat about, she flipped her, her senatorial seat. So we were able to hold on to that. Senator Sifton's seat, who, who abstrived with Doug Beck, he was able to hold on to Senator Sifton's seat. You know, that's another seat that, you know, the Republicans put a lot of money into that we weren't sure we were gonna be able to hold on to. So, you know, it is encouraging that we were able to hold the line on some of these seats. And we picked up a House seat.
So my final question, and you sort of answered this, but even just outside of how you're excited about the coming session, what else kind of keeps you hopeful and re-energizes you as you work? What do you, what do you kind of, what's your touchstone? What do you come back to, to give yourself hope?
So for me, and I think that, you know, I'm really proud of the work I'm able to do in the Senate. A lot of times, I just feel I'm most effective just doing stuff back in my home district. So as I told you earlier, you know, I've been able to set up this free COVID-19 testing. And now we were, I was able to get flu shots as well, donated from the St. Louis Department of Health. You know, I noticed when this virus first broke out and, you know, really was in full force here when we started to shut down in March, the 63113 zip code, it's an area in my district that's just historically been neglected, where there weren't any testing sites there. So being able to provide a free resource for folks who needed that, to, you know, make sure we don't have people unintentionally spreading the virus. You know, I get a lot of calls from folks who, you know, are in a situation where, you know, maybe their heat is being cut off in the winter or their air conditioning in the summer. Being able to connect them with the right resources. You know, we get a lot of calls from inmates in the Department of Corrections, being able to make sure that, you know, do what we can to look after them, you know, to make sure that, you know, they've got, for example, helping someone get simple things like a fan, you know, things like that. Just being able to use kind of our network and other liaisons within state government. Like, I mean, a huge thing and something I'm really proud of my legislative assistant, Timothy Griffin, he's just been fantastic. We've been getting a lot of folks who've been really just lost in all this, who are trying to get their unemployment benefits. Folks who've been calling, calling, and calling in for months and just weren't able to get through. And, you know, we're able to connect with our liaisons to sort of expedite these folks. And, you know, we've really got some really kind, you know, heartbreaking messages from folks, you know, crying, saying, look, I've been trying to get, you know, my unemployment for months, no one's been able to help me. You all, you know, got on this immediately, and I'm getting my check this week now. So, you know, for me, what encourages me is that, you know, I'll have a little bit more authority as a senator, you know, in the House. It can be a little more difficult to get department heads, directors into our offices. But when you're a senator, I mean, you basically control their budget. And when you call, they don't send assistant, they send the actual director. So another big thing, and that's important to me as well, is working with the Department of Corrections, making sure that we're, you know, I want to expand. And I know Rankin has done some stuff with them, for example, but making sure we've got people who are confined, you know, everything we can do to empower them and make sure that they have the tools they need, you know, just a basic skill set. You know, there's some training going on now with CDL licenses. So they will have the skills to have a job, to earn a livable wage. They don't have to go back to the behaviors that got them in prison in the first place.
Okay, great. And I know, rolling everything together now, since you mentioned the Department of Corrections, is that the COVID outbreak in the Department of Corrections in our facilities has just been devastating, not only
Right.
the folks who are incarcerated, but also the staff, the ability to have enough staff, and it's just causing problems left and right. Have you been able to make any connections to find out what's going on there to improve the situation?
We have. And we, my office in Missouri, we've been in contact with the ACLU, making sure that they're informed with the, with the situation that's going on. But it's, it's a huge, huge problem right now.
So that'll pretty much wrap it up for today. I want to thank our guest today, State Senator-elect Steve Roberts, who will be representing the 5th District in Missouri. To learn more about MCU, please go to the Metropolitan Congregations United website at mcustlewis.org. Also, be sure to follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for news and events. I'm Kevin Preng, and you have been listening to This Is What Democracy Sounds Like. Tune in again next time, and thank you for listening.